Next up, we have the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council is called to order today at 6:18 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Hassan Amad is absent. Moby Dun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer is absent. Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Present.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much. I'm going to now move over to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have our honorable one-of-a-kind councilman, Wenzel, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Councilman Wenzel, who has a knee injury, thank you for standing tall. Thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of June 25, 2024, as submitted, and to take item 11A, resolution for the city consul of the city of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting an operating budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, that it may be considered after Section 4A, approval of minutes.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Council Chair, I do. I'd rather move first, and we can keep the budget. There it is.
Well, that's all the way to the end?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So would you like to amend your motion, then, and not make it in the front?
Yes. I'd like to amend my motion to keep Section 4A to where it currently is.
Which is, what is that one? What's that?
It's 11A.
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 All right. Motion amended by Councilman Saab. Councilman Coniston, do you want to second that?
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston to leave where the budget vote is towards the end. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Before we move forward, I just want to, you know, give a couple of House rules today. I'm asking that, nothing from the audience, please, I ask that everybody keep it respectful, no chattering, no comments. And I'm also asking for this body to please keep in mind to be respectful to one another. I ask that the administration to also keep it respectful. I don't want to hit the gavel. I don't want to call point of order. But if you're not called on to the council chair, and I hate to be the dictator, but I just, I've gotten a lot of calls from some of our residents saying some of these meetings have just been out of control. So I ask that if I ask you to stop, please stop. I don't want to have to say your name 10 times. I don't want to have to vain the gavel, because moving forward, if you're not going to listen, I'm going to ask you to leave. Whether it's a council member or somebody from the administration, and I don't want to be put in that position. But it's not fair to the residents at home. It's not fair to everybody that's in here. I do not want to make this into an argument. This is going to be a fast, quick, and easy meeting. I say that, please, if we can all agree to disagree to certain things, and if we can't, that's okay. We can still love each other, right? We're all in this together to serve. That's what we are all up here doing, for one another. Next up, we have approval of the minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 11, 2024, as submitted.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on that? Is your mic on?
Nope, it is now.
There you go.
For DTE, that check, you guys passed a resolution at the last meeting, thirty-something thousand. It should have been twenty-three-something.
I wasn't here, so I will...
So if we, I don't know if we can, because we have to issue a check to DTE.
Council Chair.
Hang on one second, Councilman. Let the mayor finish. Go ahead.
So the amount that was in the motion was wrong, so it should have been twenty-three-thousand-something. So I think that...
Okay. Before the treasurer gets up, Councilman Saab.
I don't think when we put the motion, we put an amount on it.
That's correct. And those minutes were corrected to reflect that.
Okay, so there was no number in there?
There was no number in there.
Well, the treasurer said that there was.
I think you corrected the...
It was corrected today, and it was submitted to you.
With the treasurer. Go ahead, treasurer.
The original motion had an amount in it that was incorrect. And then, Madam Clerk, and Georgianne, our council secretary, went back and corrected those, because the motion actually did not include an amount. I did provide you all with a copy of that DTE check just now, so you can see that it should be $23,106. However, what I've been advising, Madam Clerk, I'm going to defer to you at this point, is that I do need an amount in the motion, because I need that to, if I'm going to approve a check, I need to know how much. I mean, I have it here, but I need it in your motion to attach for backup.
I'm sorry.
Hang on one second. Stand up there for a second, Madam Clerk. Go ahead, Councilman.
So we never actually read the motion that was presented?
You did, but it didn't have the amount.
Hang on one second. Do you allow the Councilman to finish?
We actually put a motion saying for you to pay back DTE. We never actually physically read the motion that was put on the agenda. So we never read a number. We never entertained the motion.
From what I understand, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilman. From my understanding, from Madam Clerk and her office, because they, I think you probably reviewed it again, is what you did today, to get the actual correct motion. It did, the motion that you made that night did not have the amount, but the motion that originally was sent out did have an amount, and it didn't match, and I caught that.
Hang on real quick. Madam Clerk, can't believe we're at approval of minutes. This is where we are. What are your recommendations?
That was already, it's the minutes. You're just approving the minutes.
Okay.
You can bring in a motion, suspend the rules, or add it to this one in add motion to approve that amount. But just so that you know, the amount it says was, there was no amount, that's right. There was no amount. But it says that the check was cashed from DTE.
And I gave you a copy of the check.
Right.
Just to verify what I'm saying.
So hang on one second. So does the motion allow us to give back the DTE check that was cashed in from us?
No, Council Chair, just for the record, we purposely did not approve or authorize any of that money, because that money was never allocated by council, was never approved by council. This was a DTE rebate. The police department told DTE to issue destruct to the city of Dearborn Heights. It was supposed to go to the contractor. So whatever the amount of check that was put in would be issued right back out to DTE. We can't put an amount, because we never approved it.
Okay. Well, I need an amount in the motion, though.
I guess the recommendation from this body is telling you, we never authorized for us to accept this money, but we've also now saying, whatever you received and accepted, send back.
Or have the mayor's office approve it in the police department. We have no, this is nothing to do with council.
But I need a motion, because the amount, and I need an amount, so I can sign the check correctly.
That amount would have to come from the mayor or the police department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And it says that in the minutes, that the mayor would send an email and issue that.
Yeah. And I would strongly recommend issuing a letter with that DTE check. I know, Mayor, you're probably doing that, because I don't want to just send a check without any direction.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we're done here. So worst-case scenario, we can either suspend the rules or bring it to the July 8 meeting. But walking down things, I promised George wasn't going to happen anymore. So George, I gave you my word. Even through the thick and thin, right, George? Any other discussion before we make the vote on the approval of the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. So we're going to skip right now back to fund transfers and current claims. Because we're skipping the 11A.
See, there's public comment.
Public comments.
Public comments, is it?
Yeah. Oh, it's on the bottom of the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped five. Forgive me, guys. Next up, we have public hearing and comments on agenda items only. This is regarding agenda items only. Please, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening, Zuhair Al-Ha, Dearborn Heights.
Hang on one second. You got two minutes. Just put your clock here. Proceed.
I want to talk about the budget. I'm looking at the police salaries. I see that there are salaries which were not approved by the city council, and they were not mentioned in the year 2023, 24. It was just one person, one person. And I see that if you approve this budget as is, that means you approve those increases which you did not approve previously. So I want you to pay attention to that, please, because this budget is yours. It's your responsibility, and the money is your responsibility. A second thing, I want you basically to take command of this budget, because anything happened in the next 12 months, you will be told, you done it, you approved it. So be careful with anything you approve, and be careful with things which I believe they are revenue for the city, such as those properties which we're going to sell. They should be included here, because that's a sure revenue for the city, and that is close to a million dollars. So please be careful with everything you do, everything you take action on, because that will be reflected on you from now until July 1 next year. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? You state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on, please.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Regarding the budget, I've found an additional, about $100,099,175 exact, that you could save on an expenditure. The Safe Streets for All grant, which we were awarded, the matching funds that we have to do for that is 20%. And I attended a webinar on this grant. Tim Emery also attended it. We, for our matching funds, we can use in-kind. So that's one of the very few federal grants we can do this with. So Mr. Deeb's salary, for the hours that he works on that grant, the Public Safety Committee, all of our volunteer hours could be counted towards that $100,000 in matching funds. If you keep that committee, or change it into a different committee for the grant specifically, perhaps, or a commission, whatever you guys want to do, you could save $100,000 out of the budget right now. I would highly encourage doing that before you pass it. And then the only other thing on the budget that I had was, I noticed that the water bond interest and principal was not budgeted at all, even though we have to pay that. And I wasn't sure if it was just kind of like an accounting sort of thing or what, but I wasn't sure why we weren't budgeting to pay that, this current fiscal year or the next one. And then, just real quick, this is normally at the end, but since the mayor tends to leave, and I have something for him, I'd like to just pass these down in honor of Pride Month. It's not a gift for you guys. It's a gift for you to give to somebody that you love, because there's probably someone you love that if you gave this little thing to them, it would mean the world to them. So I have one for each of the elected officials. And again, it's not a gift for you. It is something for you to give to someone else who's not in this room. So the one that says family, I did think Mr. Wenzel would like, but the rest of them, you can just pick which one you would like to give to someone else.
Thank you. You can hand her over to the clerk, and the clerk will pass them down shortly. Any other comments from the public? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Seeing none. Public hearing and comments on agenda items is over. Next up, we will have fund transfers and current claims. Before we read this, keep in mind, I don't want to spend an hour on this. Quick, simple, easy. All right? Can I get somebody to read this motion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims and ACH wire transfers 61 through 630, and 633 through 644, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Madam Clerk, please set the record that our honorable councilwoman is here with us today.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman.
I got a few items I want to discuss, discussion. Number just, number 23, 24, they're the same ones as it...
Hang on one second. I bring my sheets, because you keep me busy, Councilman. There we go. And Sir Honorable George, we are talking about which one?
23, 24, Kevin Swope, $3,380. I just see two of them, same numbers. Are they the same invoice? Was it a typo, or two different invoices?
Well, did you look up the invoice?
Yeah, they're the same.
Mr. Swope on the line? Director Swope, is he here? Did you check and see? No? Hang on, guys, real quick.
What number was that? I'm sorry.
23 and 24.
One of them has, like, the course, and the other one's a bill, just the same amount.
Criminal law, well, these are, seems like, these are two different... Yeah, there's two different curriculum over here. So if you go to the second page, you'll see he's taking criminal law, criminal investigation, and all that other good stuff. And I also thank the director for also timestamping this and bringing this also part of your backup. I appreciate that.
And then I'd like to remove item 29.
Riley and Rensilio. Would you like to amend your motion? So removing number 29?
That would be Mr. Coniston.
Councilman Coniston?
Let me, let me look and see what 29 is. That's the Riley Rensilio?
Yes.
Did you go through, because some of the reasons why?
Yes. Yes. There's an opinion on here that I've requested multiple times, that we, that we sent an email for, by council, and they said there was confidential. They would not release it. And I said, since it's confidential, taxpayers should not have to pay for it. He said that he would submit it to me, and I've never received it.
Okay. Counselor, would you like to amend your motion?
I'd like to proceed with my motion as is.
Okay. Councilwoman? Councilman?
Yeah.
You got it?
Council Chair?
Yeah.
For 23 and 24, I know we've had issues with this before. Is there, I mean...
Seven's contract, Councilman.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. I mean, we don't want to, I mean, I'd like to show people, potential future police employees, that we are willing to work with them, and, you know, and give them the education and, you know, special training that they need.
We're keeping them.
No, no, we're not disputing them. I was just making sure it wasn't a double typo.
Yeah, okay. That's all it was. Okay.
Yeah. But my other, my other one was number 29.
Yeah, 29, I know it, yeah.
The legal fees for an opinion that was for council, and that they don't want to provide us.
Okay. I was, I thought you said you wanted to remove 29.
No, 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 no. I just wanted to clear clarification.
Well, there's a vote on the table. The councilman does not want to amend his motion. So we have a motion on the table that we're going to vote on. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd say with all due respect to Councilman Saab, if the work was done, we may not agree with it, but if the work was done, the work was done.
Okay. Well, we can make a vote on this, and if it passes, it passes. If it fails, we can re-vote on it. Fund transfers and current claims, motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
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 Okay. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Wenzel.
No.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
No.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
No.
Moby Dun.
No.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
My earlier vote was...
Motion defeated. I'm sorry.
My earlier vote was just my mind moving faster than mine.
Motion defeated.
Okay. So now, we still have to pass our fund transfers and current claims. So can I get another motion on the table?
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims and ACA wire transfers 6-1 through 6-30, and 6-33 through 6...
6-44.
...as submitted. And you would have to second it.
Would you, well...
I would like to amend it to remove item 29.
Okay. Can I get a second on that? Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab now, seconded by Councilman Wenzel. Any discussion? To remove line item 29. Hearing none. All in favor?
Council Chair.
Let me, let me also set a little bit of rules here, please. I'm not, I'm not a courtroom. I'm not a judge. But I'm going to tell you, as the council chair, please, from the administration, if you want to speak, we go through the council chair, and, you know, Roger, if we need your opinion on something, we're going to ask for you to speak. If the mayor wants to speak, that's a whole different concept. But, but as far as the, Roger, you sitting up there, you wanting to speak on every single item is a whole different, if the mayor wants to speak on this, I'm going to grant it. I'm going to let the mayor speak on this. But when you want to continue to, you know, speak on certain things like this, it's got to stop, Roger. Please.
Wenzel, Jared, I address you.
Council Chair. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. I, we need to know what, what that, we've heard that for several, several weeks, that there was some request, but we haven't seen it. So I still, up to date, we still haven't, we haven't seen any requests. So we'd like to find out what the request is.
Okay.
So Mr. Farina, attorney, actually, I mean, they would have went through him, and he didn't see it. But that's why Mr. Farina is asking, you know, what the, what was requested. You know, this attorney paid, he's been doing a lot of work for the city, you know, for ZBA and everything, as you can see in the invoices.
Yep.
And it's been going on for a while.
I guess it's simply the opinion letter, Mayor, that the councilman is requesting.
I don't know what that, which opinion letter he's asking.
It's in, it's in the notes.
Which one?
For city, for inspection of records under the city, under charter for, by council.
Which item?
It doesn't say an item. It's dated 20524 by MDK.
Well, Council Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
Why don't we just take that one item out, and just minus that amount, and, you know, we can go back and look at it? Because we're holding the entire bill, 6,800, for the attorney for just one item.
And then there's also 20...
Councilman, Councilman, hang on. Please. We're going to let the mayor finish. You come to the council chair. I'll let you respond. Please. Are you done, Mayor?
Yeah, that's, that's my request, is if we just take the item that is in question, we can come back to it if we know what exactly you guys need. There's no reason to...
So you're saying cut him two separate checks?
Exactly.
Okay. Councilman?
No. I'd like to receive the material first.
Well, what he's saying is you can pay him on the rest of the things.
No, we've been asking for over two months for this.
He's received it. Please, Roger.
We have sent it, Council Chair. You know, again, it was sent, like, I don't, I don't know what was requested, other than...
Can you give me the day of when it was sent over to him?
Yes.
From the mayor, please.
Well, I mean, the attorney signs the command, Council Chair. I mean, I don't look at every email that gets sent.
Because, you know, you give an inch, and, and the attorney for the, for, for the mayor's office takes the mile. All right? And so anytime I ask, Roger, please, he can, I watch this, why don't you watch the lesson that mean Roger read?
Can I ask the attorney to answer? Because I'm not, I didn't see the email that was sent.
If he wants to answer on behalf of the administration, because he doesn't represent the council, he can do that.
That's fine.
Yes, Council Chair, thank you, the opportunity. We responded. The opinion that I thought he requested was the February 9 email that was sent to him on February 14 of 2024, which reflected an opinion from 2003, which documented with the police department what information would be disseminated, what could or could not, from Rensilio. That's the only opinions I know of. If there's another one beyond those dates, and I sent it to him two weeks ago, I sent it to him February 14. In my recent email, I referenced that how he's had since four months to look through it, but I didn't receive any response to that. So I don't know if I would take that item, or if there's another item out, I would take them out of the bill if he wants to do that. And I can sit with him, with you, Council Chair, and just go through it, make sure he has everything he needs.
Council Chair.
Yes.
I literally asked multiple times at council meetings to please print it out and put it in my mailbox, and it's never been submitted.
Okay.
That's why. Please put them in my mailbox. There's 2-224, 2- sorry, 225, 24. And when I, when I asked you about them a few months ago, you said they're confidential. They're yours, and you won't supply them. And I said, since they are confidential, belong to you, taxpayers shouldn't pay for them. And I have not received a hard copy of the actual opinion. Thank you.
It's done. Guys, we're done with this discussion. We're going to take this to a vote, bring it back. If this is, the request of the councilman is asking you to please put a hard copy in there, from the administration, please put a hard copy in there. Let's finally pay these individuals. I don't want to see us continue to hold their check, but if the request has been made for several months, and the councilman feels that he has not received it, let's just go ahead and give him what he needs, and let's, you know, pay this law firm.
And Council Chair, I just want to correct the record. It was 2-5, not 25. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're approving this with the leading...
With removing 29.
All right. So the motion is to approve fund transfers and current claims with the elimination of 29.
Correct.
All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Unanimously, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Clerk Senio, Vector Solutions Guardian Tracking Contract Execution? Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract with Vector Solutions Guardian Tracking, as previously approved by City Council motion 24-225. Pending Corporation Council approval of the agreement, as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please. Wait. Madam Clerk, would you like to speak on this a little bit? Give us a quick synopsis. Change the mood a little bit.
Okay, we're just bringing back, we're just bringing it back forward to you, because the execution of the documents, the signatures are required, and it wasn't in the original motion. And then Corporation Council is going to review it.
Such, so well-soaked spoken, good energy. Thank you for that. Our very own Madam Clerk. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, City Engineer Deeb, Metro Act Right-of-Way Telecommunication Permit Extension, 123-NAT.in.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the Metro Act Right-of-Way Telecommunication Permit Extension for 123.NAT, incorporated as outline 9B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. She beat you to that one, Councilman.
Yes.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have Interim Controller Turner, Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Thank you. Not all at once, guys. Councilwoman Breyer.
I recommend a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council amend the fiscal year 2023/2024 general fund 101, operating budget for decreases to various general fund revenue line items by $1,587,056 net, and decrease various expenditure appropriation line items by $1,110,380 net. And to amend the fiscal year 2023/24 major streets 202, operating budget for increases to transfers to local street expenditures by $1,500,000, as well as the revenues to local streets by $1,500,000, to provide funding for additional local road projects, as outlined in 9C.
Can I hear a second from anybody? All right. Motion defeated. Motion not considered. Wow, that was my first one as the chairman. Pure silence. Motion not considered. What do I do here? Do I just put it next to this? Okay.
And then it's not considered.
9C defeated, or not considered. Next up, we got 9D, Fire Chief Rogan, Fire and EMS Reporting Software Contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the contract between the city and ESO for a total of $27,268,050. I've also unauthorized the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract pending Corporation Council review. In addition, authorize the mayor and the controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, and the treasurer to issue payment from contractual services account number 101-335-10, I'm sorry, -818.000 is all on 9D.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have 9E, IT Director Cooper, BSNA... Next up, we have nine E, uh, IT director Cooper, B S and A contract execution.
Counsel chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the agreement with B S and A for online services for the building department, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement, it is outlined in nine E.
Motion made by councilman Constant, seconded by? I get a second?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by councilwoman, uh, Brier. Any discussion? I will, I actually have a discussion on this. Um, is, is our IT director on here? Can you find out if he's?
Hi, Mr. Cooper.
Hey, uh, Mr. Cooper, thank you so much for being here and taking your time away from your lovely family, so thank you for taking this real quick. Uh, briefly and quickly, B S and A, I had a conversation with actually our councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell, and she said in the past that all council members always had access to B S and A, uh, why don't we have access to that, and if so, can you create us all of our own usernames and passwords? I hope this isn't something that's gonna take several days or weeks, uh, to come, and I hope this isn't something that's gonna be, uh, you know, restraints or stopping us from wanting to have access to B S and A. Um, is this something that you can do, uh, soon as possible?
Uh, this was a request that was made, that I was writing in direction from, uh, the mayor's office to make sure, uh, to move forward with it. Um, it is access that can be given, it would have to be a city-issued, uh, device, because B S and A can only install it, it can only be utilized, um, from a city-issued device because of the software.
Okay.
You can't install the software on your own personal device.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cooper, uh, I, I think briefly, before I allow the councilwoman to speak on this, I believe some of our residents have access to B S and A as long as they're paying a certain fee, so how come I know a resident who actually came here, was in the audience, has brought me her phone, showing me addresses of different homes, and, and being able to use B S and A, you know?
So, what you're referring to is, is B S and A, the application that, uh, the staff uses, different from B S and A online, where you can look up certain information for residents. Through working with B S and A themselves, if you are utilizing B S and A, um, from our location at city hall, uh, there's not a F B who'll look up the information, because it's for our employees, because even for, like, say, the C E D office, that they look and use it too. B S and A online is different than the B S and A applications, um, that staff can.
Okay, I, I, I get what you're saying, so the, the, they're basically essentially one that has more of the admin of control versus what the residents can see is not what some of the staff members can see.
Oh, yeah, correct, correct.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you, uh, there might be a debunk over here from, I think maybe even our Madam Clerk and our, uh, councilwoman, uh, Menelowski Maxwell, so, go ahead, councilwoman.
Yeah, actually, um, when I was council chair, everyone on city council had and enjoyed unlimited access to B S and A. It is a public program, um, but we did not pay for it, because we were council members, and by accessing it, it actually helps, um, city hall a lot, too, because somebody will call up and say, look, you know, this house doesn't have, you know, something or whatever, you can stop it right there, so they don't waste the call to city hall and our employees' times looking up something that is quick and simple for us to look up and just say, look, this is it, you know, this is the correct information. And everybody on council, including the mayor, enjoyed full access when I was council chair, it was set up relatively quick, it could be done with a sign-in, or by using our, um, internet ad- address at our homes, and so.
So again, are you referring to B S and A online, which is a webpage, or the B S and A applications, which are programs that will get installed on your, on computers?
Um, we.
It's two different things.
Well, I understand, and we had the webpage, but if we could get the other one, that may even help to deter more calls to city hall and wasting time of the employees. I mean, there's a lot of calls that we got that were taken care of, that didn't have to waste our employees' time, and they could do their job. I mean, people have questions and, you know, you can kinda calm them down, is what I'm saying.
Well, 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 real quick, before, Mr. Cooper, before we go on the back and forth, um, you know, I, I, Mr. Cooper, I don't think the mayor should be dictating what this entity, the city council, should be able to have access to or not. Um, you know, this is, this is a citywide, this is not, you know, the mayor says you guys can have it or not. So, I'm requesting from you to please give us the access, and you're hearing it from the council chair at this point, you don't, you don't need to hear it from the mayor.
Counsel chair.
Yes, Mayor.
As Mr. Cooper said, what are you guys asking? I don't think you guys know what you're asking, you want the online service?
No, 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 that's not what Mr., I don't think you understood what he was saying.
Or the application, no, there's two, there's the online one, or there's the application that has to get installed.
Hang on, hang on, guys, hang on, hang on.
So, you have to be specific a- as to what you want, and so if you want what, what the city employees have, then there has to be a non-disclosure, you know, that, that you gotta access stuff outside the city hall, stuff that is personal to a lot of, I mean, obviously, the residents.
Correct.
So you have to be specific as to what you're asking.
Yeah, thank you, I, I think, I think you're mistaken, Mr. Cooper was saying, the access that the resident has versus the access, access that you have are two different things. And he was not saying, give me information on which one you'd like, that was not what he was asking, I think we're, we're well competent as to what he was saying.
It was, it was, sir.
Well, hang on, Mr. Cooper, please, what we were requesting is access that this administration has, this, you at one point as the councilman, as the council chair, part-time, had access to what you have access to today, why you have stripped it away from this council, and why are you telling Mr. Cooper to not give it to us?
Counsel chair.
Uh, is, is, to me, it's funny, to be honest with you, I don't really care if I have it or not, but some of the council members feel entitled to it.
You can have the online one.
Hang on, Mayor, I, I started off with this meeting by saying, we're not gonna be hostile, let me finish off my sentence, and I'll go ahead and I'll give that to you, let's not be hostile, please.
Oh, but it's hostile here.
Please, point of order, Mayor. Um, um, all, all we're saying here, Mr. Cooper, is give access to this body, to the same exact access that this entire administration has, and to state that some of the mayor's appointees have access to it, and they're entitled to it, and they saw, they signed some type of N D A, um, and to say that elected officials who is elected by this entire city shouldn't have access to it, is quite surprising to me. Um, and so, I'm gonna tell you one last time, please give us access to that information.
Counsel chair.
Thank you. Councilman Sob.
Um, it's not up to the mayor to dictate if we can have the application, or we can have the webpage, I actually, I want both.
I need to have both.
And I, I ask council members here not to approve anything for B S and A until it comes back with access for both appli- for both items for the council members, thank you.
There's nothing from the audience. Uh, Mr. Cooper, can you, uh, get us that information by the, by the end of this week?
Sure, if I, if I could just say one thing, too, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
So, there's the B S and A online that's being referred to, that is given free, because I have to provide to B S and A your home IP address, so that there's not a login for it. It's the same thing that we use at city hall, at Berwyn for the C E D, I have to give the public IP address, but I just wanna make sure that you're aware of that.
So, Mr. Cooper, are you telling me, are you telling me right now that the mayor can't go to Tim Hortons and use B S and A on his, on his work computer, because he would need to give them the IP address for the Tim Hortons that's on Michigan Avenue? Is that what you're insu- insinuating?
If, if it's the B S and A online version, yes, the B S and A applications, the programs that I would need to install onto your Surface Pros that you have, okay, those I can install, those you can use anywhere that you have internet, because you log into those, and those give you more information. We have VPNs that set up, again, the idea is the VPN is to make it, like, your computers seem like it's on, on our city network.
Yes, yeah, so go ahead.
It's given the court users, too.
Okay, sure, great, so go ahead and just, uh, put that information everywhere, uh, take all of our Surface Pros, I mean, you have full access to all of our, our computers, I mean, uh, uh, so, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody here is trying to harm any specific resident, or, or take anything, or be malicious in any way, I don't think any of that is happening, I think it's simple, me personally, I'm probably not gonna use it, but who knows, I may use it, it may be an advantage to me, I've never had access to it, so I've never, you know, I don't even know, uh, the significance of B S and A, like, some of the council members who had it in the past, who the mayor also had it in the past when he was a councilman. Um, so, Mr. Cooper, can you just kind of help us through, through with that, maybe get us that by Friday, thank you.
I, I have one requirement, sir, and I wanna have their, their Surface Pro there today, tonight, can you please leave it, so I can pick up and install the software?
Sure.
When you're at home, I can install the software, I have it off the R network here at the city.
Sure, uh, councilman, uh, the councilman is not here, councilman Maude, um, he is at a convention with his family, but I will let him know that you will, he can drop his off, I believe he comes in, arrives tomorrow night, so maybe Thursday, he can drop it off for you.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, that's all it is, you see that?
Yep.
Communication, it's great.
And I suppose, I'm gonna ask that this motion is, please pass, this action, this motion, is everything that you've asked for, council chair, this is the screening and setup so that the building department can do the permits and everything online.
Yep, yep, and, and I, and I want you to know, but I think this council here is kind of taking a stance, until they see B S and A adopted onto the computers, I don't think that, I, I mean, I don't know, I can't speak from all, we'll see how this vote turns out, Mr. Cooper, I hope it's in your favor.
I understand, I, I, I had to lick my teeth.
Thank you. The odds be in his favor, thank you. Uh, any other discussion on that? Yep.
Do we have a dollar amount on this?
No, this is, uh... Mr. Cooper? Actually, I can pull it up for you.
Is this one of the motion that was approved before, again, this is for the execution, asking for the signature?
Yep.
Counsel chair, can we approve it?
Can you?
With the stipulation that they need to be expelled by Friday, or it will not be at all?
Oh, no, I don't think so. Excuse me?
Sorry, it's microphone, we couldn't hear it.
No, she was asking me a question, it's okay. Um, well, you know, we got a, we got a motion on the table, we're gonna go ahead and vote on this, Mr. Cooper, once again, I hope that the odds are forever in your favor. Um, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Well, Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Has Hen Sob?
No.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Denise Menelowski Maxwell?
No.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
And Mo Bejun?
No.
Motion defeated.
Next up, we have nine F, Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director Sauer, uh, National Fitness Court Equipment Installation.
Counsel chair.
Yep, councilwoman.
I'll recommend the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of the National Fitness Court Equipment Installation from Level Up Retail Services team for a total cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, the treasurer to issue payments from account one oh one dash six-nine-one dash nine-eight-one dot zero-zero-zero as outlined in nine F.
Second. Motion made by councilwoman Brier, seconded by councilman Wenzel, uh, I'm gonna ask our director to please come up here and talk about this really cool new park, um, that's coming to the south end of Dearborn Heights, um, and, uh, pretty cool, we might start seeing a lot of new muscle all around the city.
You might just see that, um...
We're like Miami Beach.
Yeah, we, we were just actually just there the other day, staking the site out.
In Miami?
No, I wish, no, we were at Daily Park, and, um, they, um, Ali Deeb and, and myself, we went and, and Zach, uh, staked it out, uh, the cement slab will be going in, and then next, um, the company that we have, they actually put the anchors in and install the equipment, and that's pretty much all they do for the national fitness, uh, organization, and, um, they've done it several times before, so they're, you know, the company that actually has to do it, and, uh, we're hoping to have it, uh, as soon as possible, up for residents to use, so, and, um, the installation and the slab both were paid with TIFAF funds, or are being paid with TIFAF funds.
Quick question for you on, um, on the, uh, I was calling it Flopcom Park, Van Houten Park, what's the status on that?
Um, as far as the Van Houten Park goes, we actually are starting to install the pieces of the playground equipment, so it's actually moving forward, uh, the weather has been a little bit of an deterrent for us, so, um, we, uh, you know, are at, uh, the risk of what the la- uh, the weather is, and, you know, you're supposed to get rain tomorrow, but, so that's delayed us a little bit, but we, uh, um, actually are moving forward. Because of the rain, they, um, are guesstimating we should be done by the middle of August with the play structure.
Awesome, yeah, you know what?
Mm-hmm.
You know?
It's gonna be really nice when it's done.
I'm excited. Yes, sir, councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. Uh, director, is there gonna be any other supporting equipment in the area, fencing, or any parking, or anything for this, or just, just this pad?
Well, Daily, Daily Park doesn't have any parking, except for the street parking, and as far as fencing, you don't wanna fence it off, it's something that residents and neighborhood, uh, residents can come up and use anytime, it's not something that people throw or anything like that, they just sit down on the piece of, of equipment and do whatever the exercise is.
I, I actually have a question for you about Daily Park, uh, which I've walked the area many times, it's, it's dungee, it's dark, can we just some lighting, can we trim some of those trees up, can we get D P W to go in there and just start trimming it up and beautifying it a little bit, mulching it a little bit?
Well, we actually just put twenty-five hundred dollars worth of, uh, wood fiber on all of the, underneath all of the play structures and the swings, that was actually done, uh, yesterday, and, um, they were finishing it up a little bit today.
That's awesome.
So, it looks a lot better than it did, and, um, in regards to lighting, that's something definitely that, you know, we can look at.
Or even just start, let's start off by trimming some of the trees, like, let's, let's clean them up, they're so big, branches falling everywhere, you know, let's just clean it up.
I will pass that on to building and maintenance for you.
Director.
Unfortunately, I can't get out there and trim trees.
Well, let me, let councilman, because I don't know if I cut in front of him.
Yeah, a little bit, that's fine, though.
All right.
But it does look really nice after the wood fibers have been put down.
Yes, I can only imagine, thank you for that.
I actually took pictures, and I haven't had time, but I wanted to post them on our site.
Or send them to the council.
Oh, send them to you guys.
Thank you.
I take a lot of pictures, by the way, so.
We love, we love seeing updates, it doesn't hurt, great, great communication.
Okay.
Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you, um, uh, as far as the lighting goes, there was a major lighting project done a couple years ago, and it's very well lit at nighttime, it's, the whole park's lit up really well. Um, this, this equipment, this is something that's there twenty-four-seven.
Correct.
Three hundred and sixty-five, right?
Yes. Yes.
Weather, right? It can stand in the weather and...
Yep. Actually, there's one of these, um, fitness, uh, courts in Riverside Park in Detroit that we went to go see and it's gorgeous. Um, you know, it's really exciting to, uh, have these in our neighborhood and to see residents once they're done using them.
Backup photos are, you know, they're really cool, but what's gonna look like is pretty neat. Wish everybody could see those ahead.
Councilman Saab is next.
Yes, Director, I have a question. What are we doing with all these upgrades and, uh, new additions to bring into our parks for kids with disabilities?
Um, as far as kids with disabilities, the playground equipment they can use. I mean, it's there. We have handicap, uh, swings. We have, um, uh, different pieces. We will be adding and upgrading Van Houten Park, which will have a lot of different pieces. And it's all-inclusive, so...
Why aren't we making that as a priority? Because every kid or every child or every resident...
Van Houten Park, it has been a priority. When you install new, it really becomes a priority. Um, as far as Daily Park goes, that actually is equipment that we've had there for a while. Um, you know, as far as installing new, uh, Parks and Recreation does not have the funds to do that at this time. So as we put in new, then we're able to, to do that at that time.
Yeah, but it seems like we're limiting some residents to a swing in the city and that's not right. And I brought this issue up before that where I, it's, it's a great investment to invest in our parks and I'm, I'm fully for it, but also nobody should be left behind.
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilwoman?
Um, Treasurer Hicks, when you were on council with me, didn't we approve a special swing for wheelchairs?
And that, that was for Van Houten Park, I believe. Was it?
Let me come up here. Um, Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, yes. We had approved a ADA compliant swing for wheelchair. It was a first step for us. It was, I don't believe it was installed, but I don't believe it was Parks and Rec Director's reason why it wasn't installed. Maybe she could share if she has information, but that is correct.
Madam Treasurer, how many years ago was that?
Uh, twenty seventeen. I remember the year.
And it's never been installed?
No, no, sir.
And in twenty twenty-one, we also, uh, asked, we also pushed for moving forward to all of our new place gigs to have...
Right.
And I believe she's doing that now at the one that's actually...
And, and I can definitely check on, um, I believe, and I'm trying to remember from my previous director, Ken Gribble, um, I believe it was supposed to be Van Houten Park. Um, and I thought it was installed, but I can double-check that with building maintenance.
But I could also be mistaken.
Not central. No. I do know that.
So, so just keep in mind, moving forward, we wanna accommodate to everybody. I think this administration and this council and the residents just like to see that it's disability friendly.
Yeah, I totally agree.
To our children, to our seniors, to, uh, across the board, for everybody.
I'm sorry, Council Chair, one more question. Do all of our parks have, uh, some access, somebody with, uh...
You mean to the play structures?
Yes.
No, no. So, and we don't have the funds to do something like that, although that would be ideal.
We shouldn't be invested in full parks if we can't get any of them up and running to make them accessible for everybody, honestly.
But I don't have the funds to begin with. So if I don't have the funds, you can't do it. I can't even fix the tennis courts or the roof at Richard A. Young and I can go on and on. So, it's just what priorities are.
That is a priority. That's a number one priority.
I agree. We have a lot of priorities.
Let's, we have, we have a motion on the table. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, you know, like, like she's saying is, you know, there's only, you only have so much money, so much access to, to, to capital. And if we had a grant writer, maybe, maybe as a lobbyist, we'd, we'd have access to more, uh, to more money. Um, but I agree with you, Councilman. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right. Clerk, please take roll call.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Moby Dun?
Before I vote on this, I'm gonna respectfully ask that the Councilman just try to reconsider his vote on this one. Uh, investing in our parks in certain different ways that you may expect, but other residents may expect, I think this is a good thing for a good step into our, our community. And I, and I'd hate for you to have a, a, a no on, on this type of vote, Councilman.
This is not a no because I don't, I'm actually, I'm the one person that puts this for recreation, but also I believe that everybody should be treated equally.
I know, Councilman, but this is...
Rather you just have a disability, rather whatever net race, color, it doesn't matter. What I'm trying to prove is that, uh, the directors come in front of us many times and excuses, I don't have funding, but we're improving so many parks and I appreciate that, but we're not putting kids with disabilities as a priority.
You know that any park that we have officially started new since we passed the motion in twenty twenty-one are now disability friendly. So now here's the first place keep in the city of Dearborn Heights. Van Houten Park will be disability friendly.
Is this, is this item here?
This is a workout facility for, for all kinds. You can be, it's, it's sitting down workout machines that a disability child could use.
What items is it that we can, uh, that they can justify that as for disabled, uh, somebody with, with a severe disability?
She just said you can sit down and work out on these machines. Did you look at the backup? You, these are certain things you can sit down and work out on.
I see the backup and believe, and I was involved in a, in a very big project in Westland for a park for, for so, for kids with autism.
Yeah, but you guys collected, you know...
Um, it was captured through the DDA and paid for through the DDA, but it was, it was, it was first priority for such, for a park that'd be the first in the area. And I, I respect recreation and things that we're doing and, and we're, I know we don't have the funds, but I truly believe disability...
All, all I tried to do was change your vote on this. You can't, that's okay.
I'm staying on my vote.
I, I say yes. I was trying to be a good, good colleague.
Uh, Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have nine G Parks and Recreation Director Sour, Youth Sports Association Element?
Allotments.
Allotments. Allotments.
Allotments?
Yeah.
Was that a, I'm sorry. Okay, allotments for freshman and J V Raiders football recommendation motion. I'm sorry, not recommendation motion, for J V Raiders football.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and determine of Dearborn Heights Youth Organization allotments as follows. Dearborn Heights Raiders freshman and junior varsity, two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, authorize the city treasurer to pay these funds from the twenty-three, twenty-four Parks and Recreation Budget. Account number six nine one dash nine eight one is outlined in nine G.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, any discussion on this? Uh, I do. Um, thank you for this and this generous, uh, giving of twenty-two thousand six five zero. Are we putting aside, um, anything for our, our Panthers, Dearborn Heights Panthers?
I know they did. I actually did them in a previous meeting and what happened was I only received part of the documents for the Redskins, or I'm sorry, for the Raiders. And so we did the varsity before with the Panthers. And this is the other two groups that I hadn't had yet, so...
So you're saying, okay, I remember they got...
We already did the Panthers.
Yeah, I think they got fifteen hundred dollars last year.
Correct. Well, they, they ended up getting about five thousand this year. I was able to give them a little bit more, um, because all of, all of the football groups, I was able to give them a little bit more because we had less groups.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we have Planning Commission Chairman Fadlala. Planning Commission twenty-two thirty-three Annual Report.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file and the Planning Commission twenty-three Annual Report is online in nine H.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Yes.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Fadlala? I have a few, um, you know, I condemn Mr. Fadlala for holding...
Thank you.
Doing what's honorable in the Planning Commission command. Or not, yes, they can do that.
Yeah, I was like, well, come on.
But I also wanna bring up some serious issues with, with what's going on with the Planning Commission. The mayor has weaponized the Planning Commission. And I'm gonna say that bluntly. The mayor's weaponized the Planning Commission in his favor to get certain projects in the city moved for fronts. And what happened at the last Planning Commission when the food ordinance truck was put forward was honestly, was a shame. As we know, as a body, everybody here knows, and the city knows, there was an individual. There's a complete conflict of interest on an item that was being voted on. And that individual was still allowed to make his recommendation and make a vote. This body, just like we as elected officials, anybody...
Which body are you referring to, Councilman?
Uh, I said the Planning Commission and this body as a council.
Okay.
I said, we take votes very ethically and you always do what's right. And, uh, and I, and I said, and I stand by your vote, what you did was right.
Thank you.
And, but I truly believe that the co-, uh, that the Planning Commission, the way it stands now has been weaponized.
Thank you, Councilman. Council Chair?
And I'm gonna put that out there.
Yep, Mayor?
Again, there's another, more misinformation to the residents. The only difference was when the councilman was on the Planning Commission, when I received an, an email from my current council members to remove the councilman that just spoke when he was on Planning Commission, there was no other changes. So he was okay with the Planning Commission when he was on the Planning Commission before he became a councilman. And I removed him from the council, from the, from the Planning Commission at the request of one of the council members currently on, on, in the body right now. So again, that's misinformation. There's no other appointment other than one person to replace him. And the previous Planning Commission members were the same Planning Commission members when he was on the Planning Commission.
You said you received an email from a council member to ask you to remove the councilman?
Well, he was hostile and the words that they, they used, it was hostile and just, uh, I can't remember the exact word.
I'm gonna, I'm actually, I'm gonna get that. But, uh, Council Chair, just to revoke him, he just lied again on the record. He's appointed two people since I've been off and you removed me after I was elected.
No.
But there for the record.
Before you're elected.
Before, no, uh, when, before I was removed, but he removed me in the purpose of adding two individuals to push a project and let the record state that. Thank you.
Anything else, Mayor?
Again, he's misinforming the residents.
Stop lying, Mayor.
Hey, 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 Councilman, point of order. I gave you your time.
Every time you open your mouth, you lie.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Mayor, submit your campaign records, finance records.
Come on, guys, point of order, point of order. Stop it. Stop, 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 stop. Council members, nothing from the audience. Please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Fadlala, we're gonna stop this here right now. We're gonna go ahead and just make the vote on this. Everybody has...
I'm just here to present the annual report. That's it.
You go ahead. Present your annual report.
I did.
Council Chair?
I mean, you wrote the, I mean, you, who?
It's in the backup.
It is?
I, I know it's in the backup. Do you wanna present it? I mean, I read it.
Oh, you read it. That's fine.
I mean, but I, I don't represent everybody. Do you wanna, anybody want to present it?
Council Chair?
Yeah, Councilman Wenzel. Hang on.
Um, the items we have in the backup, those, those are the only things that were brought to Planning Commission in the past year?
For two thousand twenty-three, even though I was, I wasn't on the Planning Commission in two thousand twenty-three, but we went through it, uh, with the, uh, with the council, um, the city attorney and, um...
The administration's attorney.
Yes.
Okay, so there's...
The Planning Commission's attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was nothing, there was no other cases brought before you except for these listed here?
As far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, I'm on, I don't know.
Mr. Fadlala, just for the record, I'm sorry.
Hang on one second.
I'm good.
Are you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Go through the chair, please.
You were on the Planning Commission prior to being reappointed, right?
About three years ago, maybe.
How long did you serve then?
About three years, three and a half years.
And who removed you?
Oh, my time was up.
It was up, okay.
Yeah.
All right. How many other people when you were on that commission were removed? Do you know?
I'm, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other discussion here? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
And Moby Dun?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have, uh, eleven B Planning Commission. Are we going back to eleven A? We'll just do eleven B first. Let's just get, let's just get eleven B out of the way. Before, before we get to all the juicy part. Next up is eleven B Planning Commission, first reading for proposed ordinance H dash twenty-four dash zero three, Mobile Food Vendor Ordinance.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council move that ordinance for the city of Dearborn Heights, providing that code of ordinances, city of Dearborn Heights be amended by adding chapter sixteen, article six, which may be composed of new sections sixteen dash two oh one to sixteen dash two one six, setting forth the permitting and licensing requirements for mobile food businesses and amending chapter thirty-six, article two, section thirty-six and thirty-seven to add definitions and amending article six, division two, section thirty-six dash one seventy-four to add mobile food vendors as a regulated use within the city and to amend article seven, division one, sections thirty-six through two fifty-four to add food truck rallies as a temporary use to be considered red for the first time as outlined in eleven B. Thank you.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Um, any discussion on this?
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman Saab.
I believe this needs a study session.
I agree.
Or we should...
I agree one hundred percent. I was gonna ask that. Uh, I would hate to bring this before us without having the, uh, mayor and the administration to giving us a study session on this. Uh, I one thousand percent agree with you, Councilman. So if that's okay with the councilman, I would actually like to refer this back to the administration. Maybe we can do a, a study session on it. That way, we're not going to back and forth asking them any questions on it.
And refer this to a study session.
Yep, and then I will get with George and, and the, and our honorable clerk, uh, on this.
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, this, uh, I, I, you know, I read it over and, and actually twice and there was some issues there that we need to...
Yeah.
We need to...
I agree with you. I wasn't so fond of it.
You know, there's the, the, up on Telegraph at the, uh, video store parking lot, there's two, two trucks there now. And I, I don't, I don't know how we approve, you know, like Hanky Panky, approve them, but we, did we approve them to park right next to another one?
We did. It was the same address.
It was the same, we, we approved that address?
Yes.
For Hanky Panky?
Yes. Two meetings.
Well, I voted no on it anyway.
You did.
Uh, yeah, but it's like, you know, it's all sorts, like a little mini food truck park. And I, I went there, I took some photos and some of their lighting equipment is on the property, light up their truck on the, on this restaurant's property. And I took photos of their food tent, uh, tent where you eat and it was very, uh, debris all over the ground. Garbage cans were overflowing.
Did you say anything to them?
I didn't say anything to them, no. I mean, I was, you know, I mean, I wasn't going to go to the proper authorities and I, I just took them anyway. Um, but anyway, uh, I, I thought this was gonna, we could talk about that tonight. That's why I wanted to, um...
No, I think this needs to be moved to a study session, Councilman.
Yeah, for sure.
And because those, what you just said are serious things and, you know, honestly, ordinance, uh, did you reach out to the ordinance department or the building department on these photos?
No.
I would have.
I would. I am going to, yeah.
Yeah, because if, if they're doing that, then, then they need to be held responsible and potentially shut down.
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilwoman?
I am in touch with someone at Wayne County that is currently investigating an issue there with grease being poured down the drain and it has been confirmed. They are con- uh, concerned that it, it will go through the middle Rouge Park and they've had an issue with things backing up there because people pour in grease down, but they did verify definitely, yes.
I would ask that you...
And they are getting me the report. Once I get it, I will share it with you.
Yeah, I, I would say until you have the report, I would refrain from stating that it was confirmed because there was an attorney here who had already spoken up and said that, uh, they would hold the city liable for us insinuating if there's no proof or truth that they did it. So if they did find something, that's one thing, but if you can't show the evidence that this food truck person did it, then we could, we gotta be careful from that.
I, well, I did, she did confirm it. They are in the process of writing up the report.
Okay.
So I take her on her word. She had no reason to lie to me.
I, I'm not saying that she's, she's lying. I'm saying is, you as the councilwoman, you should refrain from saying it until you have the actual report, where then they can then charge them.
I did choose to say something.
That's okay. Um, yes.
Just a couple of things. Um, I want to let you know that there's somebody that, for the last three meetings, that have been interrupting the Zoom. They've been doing a whiteboard. So at the last meeting, I think I, on the direction of, um, Director Cooper, I did not allow him back in and then I think this person, um, texted the, um, administration and said that they weren't being let in. weren't being let in. It happened again, so I just want you to know the person that's clown show is not being allowed in because they just took over, took over the screen again.
Okay, I know, I know this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want you to know, in case you get a text, somebody gets a text and says they're not being allowed in, they're being, not being allowed in for a reason.
Because they're being destructive.
Exactly.
That's common, in my opinion.
Okay, and then one more thing, just so on, on the, on this motion. So we're gonna read it for the first time and refer it to a study session.
No, we're not gonna read it.
You're just gonna refer it to a study session?
We're gonna refer straight to a study session.
Okay.
Please.
So we're going to amend that motion?
Because I, I personally myself, and I can't speak for everybody, but I was not happy with this.
Okay, so then that would be on Councilman.
Yep.
Constant, to amend the motion to refer it.
Refer it back to the administration, and then I'll set up a study session on it.
So moved, so moved.
I agree.
What's that?
He said so moved, and I agree.
Okay. Okay, motion to refer this back to administration is what our new motion is. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we're gonna come back to eleven A. Before doing so, I just want the, everybody in the audience to, and those at Zoom and those that are at home, just please keep in mind to stay respectful. This is a sensitive topic, regardless of what happens on eleven A, which is the recommendation of approving this budget. I want to make something very clear that I've already contacted, just in case this budget is not approved. I have already scheduled a meeting for Friday at five o'clock, in case any adjustments have to happen. Who knows? If it passes today, great, let's pass this and move on. If it's not approved, I have already put a placeholder for Friday at five PM. So I'm asking for IT, anybody that's working in the back room, I know Friday is that the City Hall is shut down, to please be here in case this is not approved. So that way, it can give this, you know, this body and this administration to be able to work on anything that needs to be kind of ironed out. I will also say, before we read this motion, that I've sat down, had extensive conversations with Michelle. There are certain things that this body has requested for, that this administration still has not given to us, and so I want to make it very clear that the council is not the one that's holding up on this. The council has asked, and even passed a motion to request information. There are some discrepancies that I've also found today that I can maybe have a conversation with Michelle. I wasn't at the last meeting where it was turned down, but I believe at the last meeting, the, the council asked to remove the confidential secretary and add back the two ordinance officers. I believe standing, it's the way it was presented to us, that the confidential secretary was added back in, and those two positions were removed. And hang on, Councilman. And so I ask that we, we all be respectful on this. If we can find common ground and finding a surplus today, having good conversation, everybody's gonna have the right to speak. I say that you do it with joy, happiness. If we can agree to disagree, that's okay. And if we can all agree, that's okay. And if we all disagree, that's also okay. That is all that I'm asking before we make these motions. Keep in mind, there are two motions here for eleven A. The council will choose if they do adopt one of this, if they do adopt this budget, which one they would be adopting. So there'd be a motion recommended by the administration, and then a motion recommended by our special legal counsel Miyaki. So if this were to be passed today, we would follow either A or B. We'd be making a vote on both of these. If we choose to not move forward with this, eleven A could be defeated without having to read any of those. But moving forward, resolution of the Council of City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting and operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Do I have anyone to make the motion?
Okay.
So you're gonna make both motions. Or you can make the first motion, we can vote on it, we can move to the second motion, we can vote it. If the first motion is defeated, we can move to the second. If it passes, we won't even have to read the second one. Okay?
All right. I recommend a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution of the Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and said tax levy shall be composed of the constituent rates for the purposes and with estimated yields described as follows, based upon an aggregate of taxable assessed values of one billion, seven hundred and sixty-four million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the City of Dearborn Heights, or as may be subsequently certified, an amended net of tax increment capture is outlined in eleven A.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer. And, and what I would ask is, on this one, let there, before we second or not, let's give it a second, and I'll take it straight to a vote on this first part. None? First part, can I get a second from anybody? First part will be defeated then. Madam Clerk, is that okay?
Yeah, and while we can't consider it because we don't have support.
So we can't consider the first part, the recommendation of the administration. The second one is going to be the motion from recommended by our special legal counsel Miyaki. Can we get somebody to read that one?
You're looking at me again.
Yeah, I am. Sorry.
All right. Recommended motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution of Council of the City of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, adopting and operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Said tax levy shall be composed of the constituent rates for the purposes and with estimated yields described as follows, based upon an aggregate of taxable assessed values of one billion, seven hundred and sixty-four million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the City of Dearborn Heights, or as may be subsequently certified, an amended net of tax increment, increment capture. Further consistent with City Charter, Section four point nine, subsection A, the compensation of each city employee or officer shall be within the limits of, in accordance with the plan set forth in the personnel page of the budget applicable to the employee or officer such that subsection A, the compensation salary or wages of the employee or officer shall not exceed the amount stated for the employer or officer in the personnel page applicable to the employee or officer subsection B, the compensation salary or wages for each employee or officer whose position is exempt for purposes of paying overtime shall only be paid on a proportional, proportional basis during the fiscal year. In subsection C, the compensation salary or wages for each employee or officer whose position is not exempt for purposes of paying overtime shall be paid on a proportional basis during the fiscal year, except if it may be necessary to comply with any collective bargaining agreement or overtime law applicable to that employee or officer is outlined in eleven A.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by. Can I get a second? Anybody second for discussion?
I'm over yawn.
Motion defeated, or not accepted. Eleven A has been.
Eleven B.
No, eleven A.
Oh, it's all eleven A.
Eleven B, we went to first, and then went to eleven A. I will say, you know, I think there's a lot of things here that I think still need to be ironed out. I have reached and sat and had many conversations with Michelle. I believe some of the council members have as well. We even had conversations with the administration, our chief of staff, our mayor. I just want to make it very clear that if anybody states that this council has not been working diligently with this administration, that is a complete, utterly lie. We have worked hand in hand. You know, there's certain things I think that still need to be ironed out, but I do believe that we will be able to come to an agreement. Michelle, I do want to get with you right after this meeting, if that's okay. Just about one quick discrepancy that I, that I found out that could be just a mistake. But I, I will get with you on that. And then eleven A has been defeated, not even voted on.
Not considered.
Yeah, it's not even voted on. So next up, here we will have new business, temporary food truck cart license application for Juicer Connect LLC. Somebody?
Council Chair.
Yep.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck tent cart license application for Juicers Connect LLC as outlined in thirteen A.
Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by. Can we get a second? A lot of defeats. All right, motion defeated. Temporary food truck license, Tish Chai LLC. We also have somebody taking over our screen again. They're writing an S.
They have to insist that people use their regular names. This one, we know who it is.
Who is it, Madam Clerk?
Sam Ash.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm going to.
It's okay. It's okay. Nothing from the audience. To Chai LLC. Can we get somebody to read thirteen B? Council Chair, Councilman.
Constant.
Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck tent cart license application for Tish Chai LLC as outlined in thirteen B.
Motion made by Councilman Constant. Is anybody willing to do a second? Seeing that you guys didn't do it for the first one, I assume you're not gonna do it for the second one. Motion not considered. Next up, we have business license renewal, GoToMotorCityLLC. Thirteen C. Anybody? This is, this is a new era.
Let's move forward, Council Chair.
Does anybody want to read it? Thirteen C. And if there's not a second, we can. No? Okay. What do I put here? Is it defeated?
No, it's not, it's not considered because we don't even have a motion.
We do have a motion, there's nobody wants to read it.
What'd you say?
Can I, can I read it? Okay.
You're a member of the council.
This is the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for GoToMotorCityLLC two nine five five South Beach Daily as outlined in thirteen C. We got a second? All right, at least we give them an opportunity. Motion defeated. This is the fast city council. All right, next up, we have comments from council members. I am going to lead us off real quick. Before we, we move on, I want to do a moment of silence for the deputy Brad Reckling. I don't know if I said his name right. Reckling, who was ambushed and murdered this weekend in Detroit as the Oakland County Sheriff Deputy. I would like to give a moment of silence, an entire minute. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And.
Prayers for him and for his young family.
Yes, always. One, you know, growing up in a family of law enforcement, you know, my brother-in-law worked in Detroit as a sergeant, my brother-in-law's brother also worked in Detroit. Growing up, I always wanted to be a police officer. I've had the privilege to take part as the sheriff reserves deputy. It's something that I take pride in. Every year, being, you know, being able to serve the community and being a part of Wayne County, it's something that I enjoy doing. I also want you to know that putting your life out on the line every single day as an officer is no joke, and I really salute every single officer in this country for all their hard work. And I can tell you, on this body right here, I'm gonna speak for all of us. We love and honor and thank you for all that you do. And that takes me to my second part of, of, after having this moment of silence. I've been contacted by some of our Dearborn Heights police officers, and really, they asked it to be on the hush-hush, like very quiet, didn't want anybody to know that they called me. But there is this trending of, of lies that the council, specifically myself, that we don't like our Dearborn Heights police officers, and that is not true. That is a lie. Just like somebody said I didn't like the assessor and I wanted her replaced, which was also a lie. Seems like, you know, there's a little bit of tension happening in this community, and, and people are just issuing out these lies. I, I want to assure to our first responders, our police, our fire, our EMS, that is not true. I can speak for myself and this body that we love you all, we thank you all, we want to support you to it all, we want to give you any of the resources that we can. We also have to ensure that, you know, we're doing and taking the right steps. So if we're, you know, we're combating certain things that we can't really discuss because we're in litigation, I just want you to know that we are not doing that because we dislike the police department. We are doing that because we want to make sure that, you know, that proper policy and procedure, and that's what this council is asking for. That's all we're asking for, proper policy and procedure. We're not asking for anything more. Follow the rules. That is it. So I, you know, I wanted to put that out there. I also know that before our next city council meeting, we're gonna be experiencing Fourth of July. Keep in mind, fireworks are dangerous. Be careful. Stay and watch over your kids. I know I've said this, but this will be the fourth year that I've been able to say this. As an animal lover, somebody that has a small dog at home, our dogs are terrified of fireworks. If you do it in a park, you could do it in more open places, away from the residential areas, you know, please consider that. Please consider being away from trees, that, you know, the bird's nest and the bees and, and all just the natural life and natural habitats are affected by a lot of these carcinogens that come out. Everybody likes fireworks. There was just a fireworks show yesterday at Hart Plaza hosted by, you know, Wayne County and the City of Detroit, which is beautiful, right? Be careful, you know. Trying to light up a firework while you're recording this, I know that we all want to, you know, show what's happening while we're recording that firework, but our, our, our fire department is also gonna be extremely busy on this night, reporting to calls, reporting to injuries, reporting to fires. So just be mindful of our, of our first responders. I know our police officers who do a phenomenal job will also be out. And keep in mind that the state law on doing fireworks is July second, July third, I'm sorry, July third, July fourth, and July fifth. You're not allowed to do fireworks on July first. You can't do fireworks on July sixth. You cannot do them on those dates. You can only do them the day before, the day of, and the day after. And then lastly, July third will be my wife's birthday, so if my wife is on here with my son, who I believe she is, happy birthday. I'm wishing her many, many years, and I'm hoping that this budget eventually could be reconciled, and we can find a way to move forward. I don't believe that there's gonna be a city shutdown like, like that was painted. I'm sure there's gonna be press releases going around from the administration saying that the council did not approve this, but just for full disclosure, this council did not find itself to be able to approve this budget because we have requested information from this administration, who's failed to give it back to this council. And it is our duty to make sure we make strong, precise decisions, especially when it comes to the budget. Thank you. Thank you. Gotcha. Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
And tax bills will still go out on the first of July.
Yes.
All right.
Correct.
Council Chair.
Yep, Councilman Constant.
Yes, you made a good point, Council Chair, about shooting off of fireworks in our residential neighborhoods. We gotta be careful. We don't want anyone injured. We don't want to start any fires. So everyone, please be polite and mindful with your neighbors when setting off fireworks. Use the sparklers like we used to when we were kids. Just twirl the sparklers around. And half of, happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I've a few items here I want to talk about, about the budget. You know, when I, when I was, when I ran for office, I said that we're gonna balance the budget. It's gotta be balanced, and it has to be balanced, and it has to be transparent, and it has to be open. Getting elected and getting a seat, you just know how hard it is to get any information you can find on Google, the administration puts down. Information we request, put resolutions, move all information from certain W two's. Social Security is everything, still won't. Now, I'm a firm believer that, in the mayor's words verbatim, that if we gotta give a raise or a bonus, it's gonna be across the board. But it seems what this administration has done was pick and choose who gets bonuses and who gets raises and who gets positions. And this was my main reason that I cannot support this budget. Secondly, with the budget, I asked for the confidential secretary to be removed. And that was a request from council. Four days later, it was added back. It didn't move. I asked for a grant writer, a grant writer. That wasn't possible. We put a resolution, Council Chair, please, we put a resolution to hire more ordinance officers, but the issue is how dirty our city looks. That was removed. So when, when, you know, when emails go out saying that we're refusing to work with the administration, or we're anti-police and anti-union, and we want everybody to quit their jobs and stop working and not get paid and not have healthcare, it's false. Because I want nothing more than a clean, healthy budget and potentially give raises to our employees that deserve it across the board. Not somebody getting a hundred thousand dollar raise right before the end of the year, or somebody getting a five thousand dollar raise or a bonus on the side. It's illegal. It is illegal. It goes against the charter. It is illegal. Second thing is about the planning commission. There was a gentleman that came in here a few months ago proposing to do something with his business. The planning commission body, the first time he came through, tried everything possible to try to discourage him. He was asked to remove his application, to withdraw his application, I'm sorry. Then he came back, they were requesting things that, while I was on the planning, I've never heard of in my life. They wanted a survey of, of residents if they wanted such a business in the area. That's not their position. And clearly, there was conflict of interests, and nobody, nobody really cared. But the planning commission chair stood up for what's right. When I say the planning commission is weaponized, it's weaponized, and it's weaponized for a few. And when the mayor says I was disrupt, being disruptive at a planning commission meeting, no, it's that when residents wanted to talk, they were getting shut down all the time. We had some people escorted out by the police. That's what happened. I think there's video of that. Anybody's free to watch. Third is Fourth of July, be considerate. Again, pets, 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 man, be considerate. A lot of people don't know who has pets or not. Dogs and cats are terrified. So be considerate. One more thing, I wish we could have, I would say, have the chief here one day. So we need more officers in our neighborhood. Honest to God, there was a video I posted in neighborhood chat, a group that we have, and a guy was doing about eighty miles an hour calling cars off on John Daley in the yellow car. We just need, I know officers can't be everywhere, but we definitely need more officers on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to thank Rachel appoint for these bracelets, and I want to keep this one.
I'll make it.
I'll give it, I'll give it away to someone, though. Thank you so much. It says family on it. That's one. I'm sure that's the one you intended for me, right? Secondly, you know, this, this July fourth is Independence Day, so let's, you know, think about all the people that gave their, their lives to gain our independence throughout history, and those who have, are currently serving, all of our veterans, people are currently serving, everyone that works out there so we can, we can maintain our independence. And to piggyback on Councilman Sob's, you know, the police department, we need to work with the police department, city council, hand in hand, and make this a police department, you know, it, it might be going that way now, but a police department that other police officers, quality police officers from other departments would be begging to come work for Dearborn Heights. And it was that way at one year. At one time, it was that way, and, you know, this was, it's, it's maybe going that way, but let's make sure it goes that way. Because, you know, not only is it a good thing, we need it really bad. I mean, we, we, we need quality police officers added to the quality police officers we have now. I've got a really great announcement to make. This July thirteenth, Saturday, Uh, this July 13th, Saturday, July 13th, uh, the Dearborn Heights District 7 Dad's Club in cooperation with Jamie's Kids and Family Fund is holding the, uh, Dad's Club Annual Base, End of the Season Baseball Field Day. And this year, we're adding something more extravagant. It's gonna be a completely free community picnic and barbecue. And, uh, what we're gonna have there is, uh, we're gonna have, uh, free raffles, we're gonna have free ice cream, bounce houses, water slides, DJ, face painting, dunk tank, rain garden maintenance, cotton candy, and many more things. One thing we're gonna need to have is a farmer's market and young entrepreneur table set up. Uh, this is from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the same day on July 13th. This is something new we're doing in Dearborn Heights, a pop-up farm market and young entrepreneurs. So if there's someone out there that has, uh, some kids in school or something that have an idea, they'd like to promote it or sell some stuff, they're welcome to get ahold of me and, and we can set them up at this farm market. Um, we're having a picnic and barbecue where everything's free, halal food, uh, options are available, and that's from noon to four. The fire department is, is, uh, we're working with them to come down for a hose down, where they hose down the kids. And, uh, we're having, uh, something new this year is we're having, the, the Dad's Club is, uh, getting into a soccer program, which we've never done before. And we're having a clinic there, uh, at, at 5:00 PM that day, and, uh, clinics from, uh, kids from ages three to 17. And we're having a movie night at the, inside the Richard A. Young Center.
Is this all on July 13th?
Everything's on July 13th. This is a massive, this is from 8, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So it's, it's 14 hours, this whole thing, and all the communities, and everything's free. Everything, you know, food's free, all entertainment's free, everything's free, and that is going to be because of our sponsors. And that was another thing I was gonna bring up, you know, we need sponsors for this event, like the other events we held for family fun nights. And what we're doing, and, and thanks to Vince for helping me out with this, uh, we are moving the annual, uh, Jason Anthony Makowski Memorial Softball Game to this day. Thank you, man. Uh, that, that game will take place at 8:00 PM on the July 13th. And obviously, it'll be between the firefighters and the police. And we look forward to having a great crowd for that, and we're working on some details as, for some other things as far as what kind, what kind of proceeds could be collected during the game, because we're not, we're not paying, we're not asking anyone to pay for anything, but maybe we might have some donations set up for that, that, there. But, um, we have several games, all, all of our sandlot baseball games we play, the 10 and under, we're having an umpire coaches game. And, uh, we're looking for, um, sponsors, we're looking for volunteers. We have, uh, a cake walk where we need baked goods to give away, and a raffle. We have a raffle where raffle items are donated. And when you enter, when you register at the table, you get several tickets for all the different things that go on, and one of them's a free raffle ticket, so you can enter into a raffle and you win a prize. So it's gonna be, it's the first time this, this extravagant. We hope to get a great turnout and hope to get some lot, lot of sponsors to help us out with this event. And thank you very much, Council Chair.
You did a great job. I am gonna be a volunteer and a sponsor under the, one condition.
You're in the dunk tank.
No. I bet you, I bet you, I bet you if I was in a dunk tank and you asked people to, to, to donate, you'd get a lot of money. But if you want to make millions of dollars, call Councilman Sob in there, everybody.
It's for a good cause, I'll do it.
I've got another suggestion, but I won't mention it.
I'll do it, it's a good cause.
But I, I'm, I would like to be the ump of the, uh, Police and Fighters, uh, game to see who's, I don't know, we'll see, strinked out or not.
We, we, we're working on that, the, the umpiring right now, too. We'll, we'll, we'll get that shit with it down.
Don't cheat.
And, you know, I'm gonna thank the, you know, the Fire Department, the Police Department for, uh, going along with this and, and, you know, Vince helped me out a little bit on this, but, um, I was, I wasn't surprised, but I was very pleased to find out that they were just more than gung ho to get this game back on.
Nice.
Yes.
Good job, Councilman.
Thank you.
One more round of applause for the council members. Any other council members?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's in my backyard, no. It's at the, the, the Richard A. Young Center Swapka Park. It's a giant, big facility there, three baseball fields, uh, three big parking lots, all, all kinds of, the Richard, actually, the Richard A. Young Center's there, and I'm working with our Parks and Rec Director, uh, Kim, uh, Sauer, yeah, sorry, Kim. Kim. And, uh, hopefully, we'll get, work out all the little details on that. It's gonna be a really cool event. Like I said, it's everything's free, barbecue, picnic, great family fun event, thank you.
So, I mean, real talk, Councilman, like, this is amazing, but 8:00 to 10:00 PM, when should I show up? 2:00 o'clock, I don't want to miss the person at 8:00 o'clock, but I don't want to miss the person at 5:00 o'clock.
Sup at 8:00? We can feed you all day. Yeah, there's stuff going on, we'll have, we, we just now have the, the, the rough draft of the flyer built. I mean, we're kind of, you know, this is the way I roll, it's last minute all the time, but, um, but, uh,
No, it's all free.
Yeah, it does, it keeps it fresh on everyone's minds, you know, it's not like, he told us about that six months ago, you know? But, um, so anyway, all the details we put out on Facebook and all the social media sites.
All right.
Council chair?
Yes, Honorable Councilwoman.
Um, I was given a letter. Came in an envelope, unsigned, unmarked. I did show it to a few council members. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get it to everyone due to time restrictions before this meeting, because I just got it. But I've been asked to read it, so I will go ahead and do so. Um, this letter starts off as, "We appreciate everything the council is doing for this budget and the emails sent for clarification. The simple fact that they have eliminated two union positions and now a third in park and recreation, however, they want to add yet another non-union position to a higher, at a higher rate is getting out of control. With the new human resource director, Margaret, was hired after Elizabeth Perry left, they evaluated their need in the department and determined full-time union clerical position was no longer needed. They only needed an HR specialist, which they got. Now they want to hire a confidential secretary, saying it should not be a union because of the delicate things HR handles. If this was actually true, then why are they going to give the job to our previous union president? This person is no longer union president for a reason. This reason is because many, more than half, union employees and voted her out because of bylaws not being followed, abusing union time, having meetings with administration without the negotiation team, not following through on union business paperwork, and things were not kept confidential when members had an issue. Now the city wants to hire this person in a confidential position. Humor has it, a petition may go around, as many employees are willing to sign and come out publicly saying, they do not want this person in the position of confidential secretary. We are all forgiving union employees the chance to grow within the city, and no one is objecting to that. Look at Bill and Dana. They both hold very important roles and the union backs that for both of them. The problem with this one is the city eliminating the job as a union position, saying it is because it needs to be confidential, and then hiring the least confidential employee who is voted out by more than half of its members, holding the highest position in the union. The city must know there was reasons behind this vote, but choose to ignore it. This will never, this is never what we would want to do as a union. But they are giving us no choice to have, I'm sorry, no, no choice to have, to air out our union issues. The reasoning of making this position non-union was so this position would stay confidential. Now they are hiring, this person shuts down that argument completely, and they might as well save the budget money and make it a clerk three position in the union. Most secretaries who hold this are a clerk three position. If this city hires this current union person as the confidential secretary, being non-union, they would get the same vacation time, then also longevity and senior pay based on the $55,000 salary proposed, which would be a percentage as a non-union, not a flat wage like the union gets. So now we, they are even paying more than the $55,000. There are clear intentions, once again, that the city has, and it's not a good one. We see and we will, we are not threatened by the mayor's emailing, trying to say we won't have a job on July 1st. If the city needs to help them bring back the clerical position for now, they can bring it back to the table next year, or they would hire someone new outside the city if they actually want it confidential. The union is really starting to feel with all these union positions being cut by the mayor, does not want unions around, which union, which union not only protect the employees, but they are in place for the residents because they can't be strong-armed like a non-union or appointed employee. That's it. So that was handed off to me, I've been asked to read it, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and...
I'm sorry it's so long, I didn't realize it's so long until I had to read it aloud.
You did a great job on reading that. I, I, I can say to the anonymous, uh, union employees that wrote that, I'm sorry that they feel that way. And, uh, look, man, it's a damn shame that this is happening.
It is. It is a shame.
Council chair?
Yep, Councilman, I know, I let you speak, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds.
I'm just gonna, uh, this letter here, I mean, hit, hit home in a lot of areas. And I, I know one of them talking to all the union people about the, the past contract, that, uh, in the contract, they, they gave a concession that not to hire a confidential secretary, but if there was a confidential secretary hired, it would be a non-union position. That was something I couldn't understand why a union contract would...
Please, hang on.
I just don't want...
I can't understand why a, you know, a union would negotiate that way.
Time out, Councilman, one second.
You asked me a question, this is interfering with the collective bargaining agreement. I'm just putting you on notice, I was...
Please, point of order, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. Please. All I'm saying here is, the Councilman's speaking. Why do we find it, it's okay to interrupt him in the middle of his sentence? It's not okay. Look, you're, you're a respected attorney, you don't do that stuff in court, don't do it in this chamber. That's it.
Councilman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was just stating the facts that were, you know, publicly, public facts in the contract, that's all I'll state.
Were you referring something to the?
No.
Okay, nobody was talking to you. Um, please, nothing from the audience.
Thank you, thank you for, let me, we had that rebuttal with, uh, that letter.
Anytime, anytime, I just don't want to spend too much time on this. Uh, do we have?
Announcements.
Yep, we're going, anything else from any of the council members? Okay, we're gonna go over to announcements, we're gonna start off by Councilwoman Brier.
All right, tomorrow night, we have the Course Creek Commission, 6:00 PM, 3335 South Beach Daily. And, uh, hopefully, we can be updated on what reaches, that's the different areas of the creeks that they're working on. Dearborn Heights, uh, they are reaches three through seven, so we'd like to know what position they're at at this point. I heard they were in Allen Park a week or so ago. And that's where they're gonna clear large portions of the property, and I believe Dearborn Heights is 221 residents that can be affected by what's being done. All right, and then even more importantly, on Thursday, the 27th, 7:00 PM, same location, we will have our own ordinance director, Mr. Dishroom, come and tell us what's going on and maybe explain what the deal is with this going on back and forth, if we have new employees or we don't have new employees working in the department.
You'll make that decision there, Councilwoman.
He'll be talking and we can ask him anything we want. So please show up at 7:00 PM. Uh, I know he wants to update you on everything that's happening regarding garbage day problems, uh, cars on the street, people not taking the trash in, and, uh, also if we're gonna start charging more and ticketing people. So he'll be there to answer all your questions, so please attend, any part of the city is welcome. 7:00, 3335, South Beach Daily.
Can I memorize that, because how many times you say it?
All the time, that's right there. And hello to all my, uh, seniors.
Yes.
At both centers.
Yes.
I promised.
Madam...
Ready for me?
Yes.
Good evening, honorable council members, our lovely audience. Um, I'm here to let you know that this Thursday, June 27th, um, approximately a little over 5,400 AV ballots will be mailed, those that are on the permanent, that requested them. Okay, the, um, AV ballots will also be available at City Hall that day for issuance. Election workers are always needed, so if anybody is interested, I see some election workers out in the audience.
What is this election for again?
August 6th, I'm sorry, I should have said the day, that's the primary, and you'll have your state rep on there, some US...
County commissioner, your state rep.
Exactly, exactly, so, and then some judges, there's a, two Wayne County proposals on it. We'll have sample ballots as soon as we get them from the printer, okay? Um, but our election workers, anybody that's interested in working, we still have 27 precincts as well as early voting. I think we're all set for early voting. Absentee counting board, um, we, it is a paid position, well, it's not, um, a high-paid position, it is paid. And, um, it's what you get out of your, your patriotism, right?
We don't do this for money.
Right, yeah, it, but you do get trained, and it's paid training. So, um, the early voting will be at the Canfield Center again, it'll be, start, this, sorry. Another one of our chairs here. Um, early voting will be there, I think it's the second Saturday before the election, I believe it's July 27th, I'm not quite sure on the, on the date. Um, also a reminder that for the November election, District 7 School Board, we have packets available because there are full, four full-term positions, um, that are, will be on the ballot for, um, a term to expire 12/31 of 2028, I think their terms are like four years. Crosswood School Board has five, uh, positions on the ballot, three full-term positions that will expire, they're six-year terms. They'll expire 12/31 of 2030. One partial will expire 12/31 of '28, and one partial will expire 12/31 of 2026. Okay? For school board.
There's two partials.
Two partials, one '28 for, what, say, four years, one for two years, and then three full terms.
Or billion, is that?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and last, but certainly not least, I would like to thank you for approving our budget last year because, um, the Deputy Clerk Flamant and I have been able to take advantage of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. I think some of you knew that, we were gone last week up in their, at their conference. And this year's conference theme was navigating 2024. As you know, there have been a lot of election changes, and thank you, Parks and Rec Director, for, um, sharing your buildings with us. We've had FBI, there's a lot of security, um, training this year, FBI updates. We had Bureau of Election training. We each attended four, um, educational sessions on Election Day best practices, pre-processing, parliamentary procedures, as well as accessible voting. So thank you. And last, but certainly not least, thank you, Councilman Tom, Tom Wenzel, for coordinating all the family activity, that's phenomenal.
Thank you.
Council chair, I have a quick question for, uh, Madam Clerk. I didn't answer this out loud, but can a councilperson also sit on a school board?
No.
No?
If you recall, when I was appointed here, I had to give up my school board seat, you only can hold one elected.
You want to do them both?
Of course.
I mean, there are packets available, so anybody that's interested in, in serving on your local school board, come on down, we'll have them, oh, and last but last, sorry.
That's okay.
Whatever happens on Friday, or Saturday, or Sunday, I am not gonna break state law. Okay, state law is to hold an election. I will be here. I'm considered a special, essential employee, um, as far as issuing ballots.
What are you talking about?
Um, the ballots will be available on June 27th to issue.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll be here on Monday, whether or not the budget passes or not.
Okay.
Okay, just for the voters.
I, I also just want to, um, I, I just want to say a few things, when I'm, when I'm wrong, I'm wrong. And, uh, I think Councilman Wenzel, during a lot of our votes, had, uh, privileged certain information that I think I didn't even know at first. And, and, you know, he would say, you know, he would say something to us at the beginning, and I really did not know what he was talking about, and he'd say, "It's gonna come back and bite you guys." I voted no, and he'd be the only one voting no on certain situations, and I'd be like, "What's this guy talking about?" And here I am, six, seven, eight, nine months later, and so, Councilman, uh, you definitely have the wisdom. I, uh, I want to tell you that I am sincerely, uh, sorry and, um, you know, there was many times, clearly, now that things are being brought to light, that you had information and I had not understand what you were talking about first, I thought you were just like, "What's this guy saying?" Uh, but now I see that you were actually giving, uh, good information, and you were coming from the heart, and you just wanted to do what was best. Here we are today, and your stance is, our stance is basically what your stance was seven, eight, nine months ago, so. I apologize and I thank you for standing firm when nobody else stood next to you. So I apologize, and I thank you for standing firm when nobody else stood next to you. Good man. I apologize. Ms. Sauer?
Hi. I would just like to remind everybody, we have our concert this Thursday at the Canfield Center, starting at 7:00 PM. Lot of free activities for the kids, and we've got the Transit Brothers, who are a Blues Brother Tribute Band, but they also do a lot of rock. So it's an exciting night, and hopefully, everybody can make it.
Are these going to be any vendors, like food trucks?
As of right now, we only have the ones that are approved.
Okay, so there's not gonna be anybody that's not approved there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Before we also let Mr. McCaffrey speak, and I'm not gonna take his thunder, he did a phenomenal job this weekend, so we're gonna give him a round of applause as he discusses.
Thank you. So I just wanna talk about a couple of items. First off, the library did indeed have a great summer reading kickoff, had maybe the highest attendance we've ever had. I wanted to pass along some kudos to some of our staff who worked very hard. Thanks to Sabah, Carolyn, Steve, Philomena, Venus, Eileen, the entire youth team, and all of our staff and volunteers. Thanks for the friends for sponsoring the animal magic program, and thanks to the local businesses that donated treats, including Dearborn Italian Bakery, Chetilla, AB's Ribs, and Mexican Fiesta. We have a ton of events throughout the summer, so come on out. We'll be reading more on them in future meetings. Also, this Saturday at 2:00 PM at the La Red Schoolhouse, off of Kenmore Street, the City and Sons of the American Revolution will be honoring Thompson Maxwell. We will be erecting a plaque honoring a veteran of the Revolution, War of 1812, amongst other things, so please come on out.
What date is that again?
That's this Saturday, the 29th? Yeah, 29th, 2:00 PM. So come on out. That's all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
You said it's 2:00 PM?
Yep, 2:00 PM.
Uh, what's the location address?
It's, I don't know if it has an official, I think it does.
Where am I going?
It's officially on Gully. Do you know where St. Sabina's is?
Yes.
It's behind St. Sabina's.
St. Sabina?
Yes.
That's An Arbor Trail, correct?
It's off of An Arbor Trail.
An Arbor Trail, Beach Daily.
Yes, you're gonna go on Kenmore Street, behind St. Sabina Street, at Dead Ends, at this about, section of Gully, it's about 20 feet long, and at the end of that 20-foot section is the schoolhouse.
And that's at 2:00 PM?
Yep, 2:00 PM.
Sorry, just putting you, because I know last year I missed it, and Councilman Wenzel raved about it for like hours. All right, I gotta go to...
Councilor Chair, can, we have the director, who's this Thompson Maxwell guy?
Yeah, I've talked a lot about him. He's done a heck of a lot. He's known as the Forrest Gump of American history in a lot of ways. He was at almost all the events from the French and Indian War, all the way through, I think he presided over the first governmental meeting in this area, so he's got a long history.
And if you wanna find out more information, Councilman, show up.
Yeah, well, I know. I did some research. I was there last year, but Thompson Maxwell, he's actually a participant in Boston Tea Park.
Yep.
He's buried here in Dearborn Heights. His grave is right over here in Dearborn Heights, at the Red Schoolhouse.
That's awesome. You're taking the thunder away from Saturday at 2:00 PM.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director McCaffrey. Any other announcements? Any on Zoom? Is Zoom on iPhone? Is this somebody on, oh, let's hear, if it's the director, go ahead, if not, we can... There you go. iPhone 4, we're gonna ask you to unmute yourself.
I'm not a director.
You're not a director?
This is Sam Hodge.
Okay, well, any other directors? If not, we can start off with Zoom. Yeah, unmute him, and we're gonna start off with Zoom, and then we'll go over to the public in person.
Yes, good afternoon.
Hang on one second, sir. Do you have the time and stuff? All right, Mr. Hodge, never mind, I got it. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You got three minutes.
I'm here for an emergency car ride.
Thank you.
Through that chair, I'm asking the Clerk Glencena, she brought my name earlier. Any specific reason for her accusation toward me? And I'm here to respond.
I'll answer if I want to. Any other questions, sir?
I asked a question, and I need a response.
I don't believe she wants to respond, but it's on her if she wants to respond or not. Your three minutes is going.
You gotta pause my time, so I hear a response from her. She's the one who's gonna have to tell me whether she wants to respond or not, lady Councilor.
She has nodded her head, sir, she does not want to respond, but your time is going, so you got two minutes left.
She does not want a response?
No, she said she does not want to respond.
So guess what? It's freedom of speech. [bleep] you all.
Great, it's okay. Hey, hey, it's okay.
No, no, no.
Guys, stop. Stop. Point of order. He has his three minutes, he wants to say that, that's okay.
That's okay.
It's not.
I mean, free speech.
Free speech, my son is on there, it's okay.
It's on him.
It's okay. Anything else, sir? Okay, unmute himself.
He's done.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate that, have an amazing day. Next up, we have Tim Emery. Just be positive, it's okay, who cares? All right? Sticks and stones can hurt my bones, words can never hurt me, you know? We all heard about that stuff, it's okay.
As far as I'm concerned, I don't think it's all right, but that's...
Yeah, you know...
Okay, my turn, my turn. Apparently, you haven't been over to the Daily Park in a while. If you walk over there at night, it is like daylight over there. Not only that, tip a page to have streetlights put in around the park. So it's like daylight through that park.
Nice, I did not know that. Thank you for correcting me on that. I think the last I walked by it, it was pitch dark, so I'm glad that those changes remain.
And like I say, happy fourth to everybody, and celebrate it properly. Please remember the veterans when you're shooting off fireworks.
Yes. Our salute to all of our veterans. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. That's what we needed, Tim. We didn't need an "F you all," we just needed a good night. Anyone else on Zoom? I do see Barbara on here, I'm gonna wave at her, just because she's one of my favorites, so who knows, maybe she'll speak a little bit. No? All right, we're gonna start off on top here. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
Please, nothing here.
I've got a lot of really weird, random things. First, I'd like to thank Michelle from Plant Moran, a new chairman, for forwarding me her email, answering some of the questions I had about the budget amendments. It was really helpful, I really appreciated that. So I just wanted to thank her and you for that.
Try to get it as soon as possible, too.
It was great, thank you. I really do appreciate that. I would, I'd love to, if you guys could maybe work on some scheduling things to avoid conflicts, this Thursday, there are like a bazillion events happening in the city, but there's also the presidential debate, and that does start a little bit later in the evening, but for some of us who maybe have kids and get tired early, we might need to save our energy if we wanna watch the debate. So like, maybe if we could kinda try and not do everything on the same exact night, that'd be great. One of the claims, or not, I'm sorry, not one of the claims, one of the items today, the right-of-way from 123net, the letter from them and their expiration was 2023. The letter was actually from February of 2023, over a year. So I was just kind of curious why it took over a year for that to come to council, and was 123net not able to do any work over the last year, since they didn't have the permit? I was just kind of wondering what the deal with that was. And then, okay, this one was the one that was a claim. Last week's claims, last meeting's, I'm sorry. I thought you guys told the police department to pause getting any additional canines?
We didn't.
So the vet bill that you guys paid last week was for a canine named Rosie, and I believe our canine is Twix. So I'm not sure who this dog is and who they belong to that we paid the bill for last meeting, but hopefully, somebody can look into that. And then, the last thing, the budget is being held up because the mayor refuses to provide those pay records to you guys, basically, at this point. He won't tell you how much people are getting paid. I FOIA'd that information. I'll be coming into City Hall tomorrow, because he's denied the appeal of the fee that he is charging me. So I'll be coming in tomorrow to pay about $100 to get the information that he's refusing to give you guys that you are entitled to. So I guess I'm gonna have to maybe bill the city for the information that I have to pay for to give you guys, because I'm guessing I'm gonna have to give it to you, because I doubt he will ever. Don't know why he...
I'm gonna stop you right there, it was actually, somebody has already requested it, and it was denied.
Well, I know it's also been given to at least two websites. One of them's like openthebooks.com, the other one's another like employee government pay one. They have both been given the records for 2023 already, through FOIA.
We were asking for specifics.
Oh, yeah, so am I. And I believe mine matched what had been asked for from council at the meetings, I was trying to replicate that. So we'll see what I get, but apparently, if you pay the mayor, he'll give you the information you need.
So I will tell you, I will tell you that all we were requesting is, which is our privilege too, is just the directors and deputy directors. We don't wanna see every single employee in the city.
Oh, that's a donation, thank you, Sue. I appreciate that.
I'll take 20 bucks.
Sue Kaminski, Amboy Street, Dearborn Heights. First off, Council, I know how hard it is to make the tough decisions, to be threatened the way I know things have been going around. I applaud you for standing firm on the budget. It is nowhere near balanced, and it is your duty to do what you've done. And anyone who votes for this budget will not be doing their duty. So thank you, and I appreciate it. Tom, getting that baseball game back means so much to this city, and for people in power to lie and say that police did not want this game, or to say that they could not play the game, or to lie about our reserve officers, and to say that we didn't have them and they needed training, and yet they mysteriously come back and haven't been trained. I wanna thank you personally, and on behalf of every resident in this city, because that's not just a game, it's about the heart of this city. It's about remembering a officer who was fallen in the line of duty, and it's about respect. And that's something that administration does not have.
And thank, and I thank Vince.
Vince, thank you. So I appreciate that, and you have more people behind you than the few in administration that continue to violate the charter. And I encourage every state employee, including the governor, to watch this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move over, I do also wanna recognize there are two amazing police officers who are here with us today. Let's give them a round of applause. This is what Dearborn Heights is all about, serving and protecting, and always instilling that we support our police, we support our fires, because that's the most important thing. Because they are protecting us, they are risking their lives for us. And so, ladies, I thank you guys so much for the hard work that you guys do for the residents, and for all of us in here. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for an extra minute because of the 4th of July thing. I'm gonna say this.
Hold on, so you want four minutes instead of three minutes to talk about 4th of July?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna give you four minutes.
Okay.
Only because, only because this is a serious topic.
My father served in the Normie Beach Nation. My father received a Purple Heart, and my father's name, he passed away, and he's on a wall in Washington, DC. And my father fought for this country, okay? And I'm very proud of that. And I wanna say this, I wanna thank Denise Malanowski. Tell your brother Barry, thank you for helping me, okay? I'm gonna be moving in that, I'm gonna have to sell the house, because my wife's in the hospital, they just got her out of the hospital, she's in a nursing home, and we, and I can't do the work like I used to do, and we'll have to go with the senior assistant living, okay? So my daughter's gonna be selling the house, but what I need is some help. I wanna know, how can I get somebody to help me and not pay him or whatever to cut my weeds in the back because of that, because I can't do this stuff like I used to?
George, I want you to give him my phone number, and I will help you, and I'm sure we can get, I can get a couple of volunteers, some of the council members on here.
Yeah, but you get, let me say something, and I'm not saying who, but somebody said there was branches before that needed to be cut on, what do you call them, on Warren Avenue. And I reported that you couldn't, when you drive, I live on Robin Dale Street, and I reported that when you try and make a left turn, you couldn't see, and you almost got hit. Nobody cut that branches and nothing, okay? And one of my neighbors heard me talking about it, and he took, he went and cut the branches, okay? So you could see a little bit, but the more branches needed to be cut. And in front of my house on Robin Dale Street, that street needs to be fixed, okay? Because there's bumps, you know, potholes and everything else. When they gonna fix that, okay? When somebody's gonna get killed or hurt? No, no, that's uncalled for, okay? You got money for golf course, but you don't have money to do what is for the safety of the people, okay? That's all I have to say, so...
Sir, I want you to do me a favor, give your phone number and your address to George, our assistant, please to help him out with filling this out, and then she's gonna email it to me, and I will reach out to you, and I will send it over to some of the council members.
I've been with this city for 53 years, okay? I've been with this city for 53 years, okay? And, and I've been married to my wife 54 years, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna, thank you, George, always going above and beyond. Another round of applause for George, too. A lot of recognition here today. As I stated in many different meetings, George makes our meetings run smooth, she gives us our package, she makes sure the agenda's up to date, she follows up with me. I mean, she is on the ball, she also hates swear words, so keep that in mind. Anybody that swears during these meetings, keep it in mind, George does not like that. How you doing, ma'am?
Hi.
Hold on. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Haley Spurgis, Dearborn Heights, and Amboy Street. So I am actually an employee at Carrera's Italian Cuisine. My boss, actually, I wasn't coming here for that. And I do have video of both of the food trucks on my phone dumping oil. If I could give that all to council or send it, I have both of them right now.
So you would have to actually print it out, if it's a video, maybe you can share via email to us?
Okay.
I'd love for you to even text it to me?
Okay.
And if that's the case, then they need to be prosecuted and shut down and out of our city.
Okay, yeah. Okay, yeah. Then they also have been trying to have their customers park in the restaurant's parking lot, which is inhibiting us from actually being able to have our customers park in our parking lot as well. So.
Council chair?
Yes.
I have seen the videos and I can verify it is true. That's why I followed up with Wayne County.
That's amazing. Thank you. I'd love to see that video. Maybe we'll also catch you before you leave.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Good evening. My name is Steve Vale, city of Dearborn Heights, East Pleasant Ridge Street. Again, this is.
About Warren Avenue.
At Warren Avenue. In regards to racing.
I'm gonna pause your time for a second. I didn't even start your time, so I'm gonna pause it now, but, Steve, I sat out my friend who lives on Centralia, like eight houses from Warren, right there, and holy cow. And I talked about you. I said, there's this really tall, older man, bald, and he talked about Warren, and I could not believe my ears. We as a city could have captured so much money in those two hours that I sat hanging out at my friend's house, just hearing the vroom, vroom. I said, whoa, like, there's no streetlights, I mean, not streetlights, there's no, uh, traffic lights. I mean, it was, it was crazy. So I, I, I knew, and I saw you here today. I could have waited to tell you my story. I wish I had your photo, but I was gonna call you. I tried to call the police. But I just wanted to share that story. But I'm gonna go ahead and let you go back on your time.
Thank you. I was here last week. Again, I want to keep this in front of you.
Yes.
That's why I'm here every week and have been for the last couple, three, four weeks, meetings. At the last meeting, I was talked to privately. At that time, the council person kind of made a personal commitment of trying to get a resolution together for more cameras. Said it would be done by the next meeting. That apparently did not happen. Understand, resolutions can take time.
I will tell you that the councilman did bring me the resolution, but there's, like I said, to promise to George that anything passed Tuesday, we won't allow to walk out, it will be on the next meeting. It's actually already on the agenda.
Okay, and that's fair. Again, the complaint was not that it wasn't there, just to bring it up again, to keep it in front of people's minds. On top of that, I guess I would like to put forth, you know, whether we contact state police or Wayne County Sheriff for assistance in regards to getting maybe more patrols on the weekends or certain hours on the weekends. I'm sure, my understanding is that with Wayne County Sheriff, they would like to share, if you will, in the bounty of tickets that would be written, but it's usually like a 20, 30% bounty, if you will, share, if that's acceptable. But there are, I guess, systems out there in which we could get assistance from outside sources to help with patrol from time to time. I would seek that that be looked into and try to help rectify the problem, because the problem's just gonna get worse. I think with the open of, you know, less signals on Warren as there is on Ford Road, less traffic on Warren than what there is on Ford Road. Also on Beach Daily and some of these streets, again, I can, with my windows open, hear a car come down, race down Warren, hit, hit Telegraph, and then turn and start racing down Telegraph. So it's just a matter of, I can hear the vehicles, you know, I, I don't know, you know. It's a matter of the patrols being in the right spot in the right area. I understand that. That can't be everywhere. But again, subjectively, I've not seen any changes from my first visit here a month and a half ago.
Steve, I'm, I'm gonna pause your time because I know the councilwoman wanted to say a few things.
Yes.
In, in response to that. But I wholeheartedly agree. I, I wish I had your number a week ago, because I was gonna say, hey, Steve, I'm probably around the block from you. Or I may be a couple, a lot, you know, a lot further than you, but we're all here in the same vehicle.
I have filled out the form. My cell number was on the form.
Steve, can you email me his phone number tomorrow as well? Thank you.
I'd like to say, I, sorry, Steve, I didn't recognize you. Steve is actually my kindergarten buddy. We've both grown up in the city together over the years. You live the next block over from me. So we both know how it used to be years ago, and unfortunately, there is change. Unfortunately, there is change, but sometimes it's not always for the best. And you are right. It, it's not the quiet city I used to know. And I know you, where we were at, it was very quiet. And I apologize. I know where your house is now, and I know it's gotta be terrible living there.
Again, I, my intent here is just to bring it to everybody's attention.
Right.
If there are measures that can be taken to help improve the situation, that's my main goal here in throwing up at these meetings.
Has anybody called you from the, from the police department at all?
No, I've had no contact from anybody.
Okay. I will, I will thank you for that. George, please give me, and just send it over to me.
Council chair?
Yep.
Go ahead, councilman. Steve, I, I did keep my promise.
Yeah.
I just had to make clarification on where the money was coming from, and by the time I got it, it was too late to plan this meeting. It will be on the next meeting.
Okay.
And, and, and Steve, I would have let it walked on, but you see those two ladies over there? They're like Rooster Peppy sometimes when you start walking things on. You start yelling and screaming. I'm there, I'm like, whoa.
We learn from the best.
I'm just joking.
One last quick comment.
Yes, sir.
I am very disappointed in the mayor disappearing like he usually does before these comments start being made. It's very. Yes, and unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. God bless you. And you know, guys, it's disappointing when, when, you know, the man's in a brace. He's coming in here for the own comfort of silence and peace in his community. We as a community have failed him. But I don't just blame, you know, this on the administration. I blame this to the parents and to the drivers, to this community as well. But I would like to see things adopted like we've seen in, you know, things that have been adopted, like the city of Dearborn. You know, I've seen videos on, on the city of, you know, on the TCD page where if somebody was doing donuts on Ford Road, and they captured that vehicle and that license plate, the next video on TCD was the police chief and the mayor walking up into that person's house and saying, this is not a tower, and the car was impounded, not ticketed. They were impounded. That's the type of structure we want to see in the city of Dearborn Heights. Now, hey, we can't pull them over. And mind you, these videos that went viral were off people's regular phones. That was it. So I just wanted to share that information with you guys. How you doing, Vince? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
You just said my name.
You know, Vince always has to give me a hard time. I, I try not to steer, and I'm all meeting.
Yeah, good evening. Good evening, distinguished council members, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Wenzel, for getting this ballgame back online. And I'm hoping to see some of the old crew members out there, too, some of our power hitters, because I'm pretty sure the guys on the fire department are well in shape. I like, I like this skinny little Polack here. So thank you very much for getting that together, and I look forward to the game, good Lord willing. Ms. Breyer, I don't see why you have to have Mr. Dishroom on your Thursday night meeting when the, when the Thursday night comstat meeting is doing the same thing. You're talking about the police department and ordinance department, which should be working hand in hand. So I don't see why Mr. Dishroom couldn't come to that meeting and answer questions.
Hang on, hang on one second. Let him finish, then you can respond.
Okay.
Are you done? You wanted to respond?
Just give me, go ahead, respond, and then give me another minute.
I'm gonna pause your time.
Okay. You're gonna give him five.
Who?
Four minutes, for four minutes. He's giving me his four.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
When we spoke last Thursday, he said he was going to that meeting first, and then he'll be coming to ours.
Okay.
So he's doing both.
So, so.
Our meetings are always on the fourth Thursday of the month, so I can't change that date. Otherwise, we'll lose what attendance we do have.
Okay, understandable.
So that's, that's the answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Nice planning. Years ago, or not years ago, some time ago, if you recall, Mr. Bedun, I put in a request for all meetings regarding the city to be video recorded. I was referring to our planning commission meetings. I was also referring to our. Pardon me?
Zoning.
The zoning meetings and all the meetings revolving around the police department or any type of involvement of the city. Now, so we do have the technology and capability of recording these meetings, which would eliminate a little bit of bickering and arguing, and you could refer back to them without any problems, not just having an audio recording. So if you would consider putting that back into the budget and getting that active, that way we won't be dickering about who said what. Also, we need to get this revenue coming back in, ordinance, whatever they're doing. They're complaining about cars or whatever, don't have enough cars. I'll take some of those non-used police cars, give them the ordinance. I'm sure they could be, equipment taken out of them, the necessary equipment taken out of them, and they can be put on the road. And ladies, our police department, thank you for doing your job. I'm 100% behind you guys, regardless of what's been said about me. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vince. Anybody says anything about you, they're cowardly, Vince.
Council chair?
I think you do a great job. You've been, you've attended more meetings than me.
Council chair? You know, I, I appreciate the kudos about the baseball game and the field day and, but the real, the real thanks should go out to the police department, fire department for wanting to do this, and the Dearborn Heights District 7 Dance Club for providing us with the facilities for that day. Thank you. All those.
Thank you. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside at, and the street you live on.
Ned Apigian Rosetta Street, Dearborn Heights. I came here today to alert you to a common problem. I don't know whether the council should be concerned, or the administration, or both of you, or the director, or the DPW, or ordinance. Coming home, as I usually do from Warren, I cut through Riverside. I come to Military in Military Hills subdivision. There's a home that was for sale. The for sale sign is gone. And there it is, June Teeth, a holiday, and I saw at least eight, nine, or 10 trees lopped off with stumps. And I went home and I immediately called the police. Isn't the first time that police have gone to people like that and handcuffed them and take them off the court. I'm concerned about this tree ordinance. I've mentioned before, as a former councilman, I wrote a tree ordinance that protects us and allows residents to have freedom to do as they will. They can remove trees if they're in their way, if they're dead, if they're damaged by storm, or if you're having an expansion and they're in your way. You can't willy-nilly. We have to tell the real estate people there, inform them of the ordinance. I think that ordinance isn't worth the paper it's written on, and I've begged you several times to invite me to a study about the tree ordinance. I went there today. They have all stumped the trees. You really can't tell whether they're eight, nine, or 10. Thank God they left four. I don't know what else to say. It really pains me on the weekends when I hear those saws going off. Now, one of the things that's happening is private owners are trimming city trees. It's not their business. It's your business. They need to be fined. But what they're doing is they're butchering trees. It's not a tree anymore. It's a telephone pole with an umbrella on it, and all sorts of ridiculous butchering of them. And they're not even leaning toward their house. And I cannot tell you how this pains me. I, I'm not here to congratulate you for anything you've done. I'm not quite sure. I'm sure you're doing the best you can, and I'm sure the mayor is trying to do the best he can. But what can we do about this? Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom or in person? Okay.
Angela Vanegas, Dearborn Heights, Dwight Street. Blight issue. How can our ordinance department even write out tickets? When you walk up to City Hall, you have the J C's little display over there, full of weeds, a dead tree. You look at the memorial for the veterans, the flag is all torn apart. There's weeds all in the cracks of the sidewalk. There's two flower pots that have been sitting on both sides of the entrance, growing with weeds now. You look at the mats coming into City Hall, and it looks like rats have chewed on them. They're all battered and tattered and dirty and disgusting. What the hell is going on in this city? Seriously, what the hell is going on? And where's our mayor to speak to the residents? Mo Bedun, we need a City Hall meeting. He needs to get his act together. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela Vanegas. Anyone else on Zoom? I think this is the city record. No, she's not. She's giving a round of applause, I believe. Thank you, Barb. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Sab, second by Councilwoman Denise Malinowski Maxwell. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
No, no, guys. All in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We gotta be 100% all the way to the end.